I would like to call the special called meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, May 1st, 2017 to order. Sue, if you'll please call the roll, make any announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the May 1st, 2017 special called meeting. I will waive the reading of the rules and general announcements since we do not have any audience. As I call roll, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Coontz.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Luss.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Moore.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all. All right, Sue, if you'll please call the approval of the agenda.
Next item is approval of the meeting agenda. Agenda item number 17-104.
Okay, I have a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Thurman, second, Councilmember Longoria. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any noes, that's unanimous. Do we have any public comments, Sue?
We do not, sir.
Okay. Then I would ask for a motion to move into executive session to discuss personnel.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Moore, I believe, and then from Councilmember Thurman, second, from Councilmember Coontz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that's unanimous too. So we will go into executive session.[103.64]
The symphony on two Russian themes. To my ear, one of those themes was very reminiscent of "Steps of Central Asia" by Borodin, but I could be just imagining that. The BBC Philharmonic Orchestra led by Vasiliy Sineisky on "Steps of Central Asia" is a symphony by the Russian orchestra. The symphony is composed by Mikhail Glinka and a symphony on two Russian themes. To my ear, one of those themes was very reminiscent of "Steps of Central Asia" by Borodin, but I could be just imagining that. The BBC Philharmonic Orchestra led by Vasiliy Sineisky on "Steps of Central Asia" is a symphony by the Russian orchestra. The symphony is composed by Mikhail Glinka and a symphony on two Russian themes. To my ear, one of those themes was very reminiscent of "Steps of Central Asia" by Borodin, but I could be just imagining that. The BBC Philharmonic Orchestra led by Vasiliy Sineisky on "Steps of Central Asia" is a symphony by the Russian orchestra. The symphony is composed by Mikhail Glinka and a symphony on two Russian themes. To my ear, one of those themes was very reminiscent of "Steps of Central Asia" by Borodin, but I could be just imagining that. The BBC Philharmonic Orchestra led by Vasiliy Sineisky on "Steps of Central Asia" is a symphony by the Russian orchestra. The symphony is composed by Mikhail Glinka and a symphony on two Russian themes. To my ear, one of those themes was very reminiscent of "Steps of Central Asia" by Borodin, but I could be just imagining that. The BBC Philharmonic Orchestra led by Vasiliy Sineisky on "Steps of Central Asia" is a symphony by the Russian orchestra. The symphony is composed by Mikhail Glinka and a symphony on two Russian themes. To my ear, one of those themes was very reminiscent of "Steps of Central Asia" by Borodin, but I could be just imagining that. The BBC Philharmonic Orchestra led by Vasiliy Sineisky on "Steps of Central Asia" is a symphony by the Russian orchestra. The symphony is composed by Mikhail Glinka and a symphony on two Russian themes. To my ear, one of those themes was very reminiscent of "Steps of Central Asia" by Borodin, but I could be just imagining that. The BBC Philharmonic Orchestra led by Vasiliy Sineisky on "Steps of Central Asia" is a symphony by the Russian orchestra. The symphony is composed by Mikhail Glinka and a symphony on two Russian themes. To my ear, one of those themes was very reminiscent of "Steps of Central Asia" by Borodin, but I could be just imagining that. The BBC Philharmonic Orchestra led by Vasiliy Sineisky on "Steps of Central Asia" is a symphony by the Russian orchestra. The symphony is composed by Mikhail Glinka and a symphony on two Russian themes. To my ear, one of those themes was very reminiscent of "Steps of Central Asia" by Borodin, but I could be just imagining that. The BBC Philharmonic Orchestra led by Vasiliy Sineisky on "Steps of Central Asia" is a symphony by the Russian orchestra. The symphony is composed by Mikhail Glinka and a symphony on two Russian themes. To my ear, one of those themes was very reminiscent of "Steps of Central Asia" by Borodin, but I could be just imagining that. The BBC Philharmonic Orchestra led by Vasiliy Sineisky on "Steps of Central Asia" is a symphony by the Russian orchestra. The symphony is composed by Mikhail Glinka and a symphony on two Russian themes. To my ear, one of those themes was very reminiscent of "Steps of Central Asia" by Borodin, but I could be just imagining that. The BBC Philharmonic Orchestra led by Vasiliy Sineisky on "Steps of Central Asia" is a symphony by the Russian orchestra. The symphony is composed by Mikhail Glinka and a symphony on two Russian themes. To my ear, one of those themes was very reminiscent of "Steps of Central Asia" by Borodin, but I could be just imagining that. The BBC Philharmonic Orchestra led by Vasiliy Sineisky on
The BBC Philharmonic Orchestra led by Vasiliy Sinaisky on the station that always asks you to use your imagination. Classical New York 105.9, WQXR.
With April showers behind us, we just have May flowers to enjoy. And spring has really sprung in New York. It's glorious to see. Great music is always in bloom at WQXR, where we'll have blissful Mozart, spirited Mendelssohn, your morning Bach and much more. Jeff Spurgeon here. Join me for morning music in full bloom. Just set your alarm to wake up with WQXR.
Here's the rondo from Sharpened Taeze, Today in on WQXR, featuring Maurice Andre.
Hi, David. Are we ready? Good. Can everybody hear me? Welcome. Is this anybody's first time to your new City Hall?
We've got to adjourn this one.
All right. You're right. I have to, we're in another meeting, so I'll ask for a motion to reconvene.
I move.
Second.
I have a motion and second reconvene. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? No, so we have reconvened, and then I will ask a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I move.
Second.
I have a motion and second to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Before we get started, I'd like to welcome Remco Bromlett to lead us in invocation.
Let's pray. Our Father in Heaven, we pause for a moment in between meetings to focus our minds on the things that are above, where you are seated on your throne and from where you dispense your grace and your mercy and from where you watch over us. We thank you for this new building that we officially opened this past weekend and pray that you fill its halls and offices and rooms with your goodness and your love and your grace and may these facilities inspire all those that work here to reach for greater heights of excellence in service and leadership to the community. And as for tonight's meeting, we invite your presence here with us. We pray for divine wisdom, for clarity of thought, and we pray that you would give us unity in mind and spirit over all decisions and all deliberations that affect our life here in Milton. We ask all of these things in your great name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much. Well, now, I formally want to welcome you here to our new City Hall. Thank you for being here. I'd like to call the regular meeting of Milton City Council for May 1, 2017 to order. Sudi, if you'll please call the roll and make any general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the May 1, 2017 regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Kuntz.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Luss.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morick.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Sudi, if you'll please sound the next item, which is the approval of the agenda.
Next item is approval of the meeting agenda, Agenda Item Number 17-115.
Okay. What I would like to do is, I would like to move the Agenda Item Number 17-115 to after the consent agenda. I'd like to also add a nomination of a Cultural Arts Committee member, District 3, Post 2, to after the BZ, this, the item I just called 17-115. And then I would like to also add another recognition item to the, for the BZA member at the, along with that. And, go ahead, Matt.
And I'd like to add as well a presentation just to say thanks to one of my BZ members.
That was what I, that was there.
115 is adding, I mean, so, okay.
Got that. And then I would also like to add an executive session to discuss personnel prior to first presentation items. You have all that, Sudi?
I do.
All right. Anything else on the agenda? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as modified.
Second.
You have a motion, Councilmember Hewitt, second. Councilmember Morick, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. So, do we have any public comment tonight?
We do not, sir.
Okay. I'll move to the consent agenda, if you'll please read those items.
First item is approval of the April 10, 2017, Regular City Council Meeting Minutes, Agenda Item Number 17-107. Next is approval of an intergovernmental agreement concerning the processing, storage, and control of evidence within the city of Alpharetta by the City of Milton Police Department, Agenda Item Number 17-108. Next, approval of a professional services agreement with BM&amp;K PC for city program management services, Agenda Item Number 17-109. Our fourth and final consent agenda item this evening is approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and the Tomah Corporation for guard rail repairs on Hamby Road, Agenda Item Number 17-110.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as prepared by staff.
Second.
Do I have a motion and a second for approval? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Unan- unanimous. City feel, please call the next item.
Next item is consideration of a resolution, appointing a member to the City of Milton Board of Zoning Appeals for District 2, Post 1, Agenda Item Number 17-115.
Councilmember Luss?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. My appointee to the Board of Zoning Appeals rolled off that board after having suffered, he served 10 years on that board. He may have suffered. So, in his place, I'm recommending that, or I'm recommending that Ed Parsons be appointed to fill that position. And for some, excuse me, background on Ed, he's been a Milton resident since 2004. After growing up on a horse and dairy farm in Western Massachusetts, he attended college in North Dakota for two years and then transferred to the University of Montana, where he graduated with an MBA and undergraduate degree in forestry and wildlife management. Ed has worked for U.S. Forest Service as contract logging administrator, and then worked for Champion International for eight years in R&amp;D group doing growth and yield modeling for 2.1 million acres of timberlands on the West Coast. After transferring to North Carolina, Ed made his way to Atlanta. He sold GPS systems and then became a technical recruiter for one of the largest IT recruiting firms in the country. And after a year in that position, and he was, he moved to one of the top 10 revenue-generating recruiters in the nation. 14 years ago, he moved out on his own and started his own company named Berkshire Recruiting Services. His office is in Alpharetta, and he's known nationally as the only recruiter that specializes in one particular software. He's married to Catherine Parsons. He has a 12-year-old daughter who attends Rivers Academy, and a five-year-old son who will be attending Summit Hill Elementary next year. Ed's been involved in Milton for many years and was appointed to the Design Review Board by Mayor Lockwood a couple of years ago. His hobbies are varied and include raising several types of pets, including chickens, and most famously known for honeybees. He enjoys woodworking, fly fishing, beekeeping, and spending time with his family. At this time, I'd like to recommend Ed Parsons to fill Post, District 2, Post 1, BZA.
Second.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve Ed Parsons.
Second. I have a motion with Councilmember Thurman, second, from Councilmember Morick. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
All right.
I'll tell you what, I may, may, hold on just a minute, we'll do a swearing-in, but we'll look, we'll do this next agenda item, and then we'll do both those and then do pictures. Sudi, feel, please call the next item.
Next item is consideration of a resolution, appointing a member to the Milton Cultural Arts Committee for District 3, Post 2, Agenda Item Number 17-118.
Okay. Rick?
Thanks. It's my pleasure tonight to nominate Barbara Pack to the Milton Cultural Arts Committee. Barbara is a native of New York. She graduated from Fisher College in Boston, Massachusetts with a degree in international law. She spent the majority of her career with General Electric in global ergonomics and other areas of environmental health and safety, and she also was a manager in GE Corporate Environmental Programs. Barbara's been living in Milton for a number of years. She's passionate about cultural arts. She's passionate about cultural arts. She also has been very active as a volunteer. She is a member of Better Together. She also is on the Board of Directors of Milton Grows Green. In our recent Literary Festival, she was the volunteer coordinator, helped run the whole program. She also heads up the Adopt a Road program as volunteer coordinator, and then she's been on the Earth Day Planning Committee in the past, and also has participated in Rivers Alive. And I would like to nominate Barbara Peck for District 3, Post 2, Cultural Arts Committee.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve Barbara Peck for District 3, Post 2, for the Cultural Arts Committee.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Kuntz, second, from Councilmember Lusk. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. All right. Let's, if we could, I'll have these Barbara and Ed's. Well, we'll do it one at a time, but I'll swear them in, and then we'll have councilmen. So, if you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I just solemnly swear and affirm.
You solemnly swear and affirm.
You guys know there's some kind of lookout. That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
The Board of Zoning Appeals Member.
The Board of Zoning Appeals Member.
Of the city.
Of the city.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
And I will support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the Constitution.
As well as the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the laws of the United States of America.
And the laws of the United States of America.
(applause) Do you ready your right hand and repeat after me? I should solemnly swear and affirm.
I solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
The right hook.
Faithfully perform the duties of. The Milton Cultural Arts Committee.
The Milton Cultural.
Committee of the city.
Of the city.
And that I will support and defend the charter.
And that I will support and defend the charter.
thereof.
thereof.
And as well as the Constitution.
And as well as the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
(applause) Do you have a motion? All right. Do you have a motion? And repeat after me. I should solemnly swear and affirm.
I solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
The right hook.
Faithfully perform the duties of. The Milton Cultural Arts Committee.
The Milton Cultural.
Committee of the city.
Of the city.
And that I will support and defend the charter.
And that I will support and defend the charter.
thereof.
thereof.
And as well as the Constitution.
And as well as the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
(applause) Do you have a motion?
I solemnly swear and affirm.
Okay. Do I have a motion? From Councilmember Kuntz, second, from Councilmember Lusk. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. All right. I'll tell you what, I may, hold on just a minute, we'll do a swearing in, but we'll look, we'll do this next agenda item, and then we'll do both those, and then do pictures. Sudi, if you'll please call the next item.
Next item is consideration of a resolution, appointing a member to the Milton Cultural Arts Committee for District 3, Post 2, Agenda Item Number 17-118.
Okay. Rick?
Thanks. It's my pleasure tonight to nominate Barbara Peck to the Milton Cultural Arts Committee. Barbara is a native of New York. She graduated from Fisher College in Boston, Massachusetts with a degree in international law. She spent the majority of her career with General Electric in global ergonomics and other areas of environmental health and safety, and she also was a manager in GE Corporate Environmental Programs. Barbara's been living in Milton for a number of years. She's passionate about cultural arts. She also has been very active as a volunteer. She is a member of Better Together. She also is on the Board of Directors of Milton Grows Green. In our recent Literary Festival, she was the volunteer coordinator, helped run the whole program. She also heads up the Adopt a Road program as volunteer coordinator, and then she's been on the Earth Day Planning Committee in the past, and also has participated in Rivers Alive. And I would like to nominate Barbara Peck for District 3, Post 2, Cultural Arts Committee.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve Barbara Peck for District 3, Post 2, for the Cultural Arts Committee.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Kuntz, second, from Councilmember Lusk. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. All right. Let's, if we could, I'll have these Barbara and Ed's. Well, we'll do it one at a time, but I'll swear them in, and then we'll have councilmen. So, if you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I just solemnly swear and affirm.
You solemnly swear and affirm.
You guys know there's some kind of lookout.
(laughter)
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
The Board of Zoning Appeals Member.
The Board of Zoning Appeals Member.
Of the city.
Of the city.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
And I will support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the Constitution.
As well as the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the laws of the United States of America.
And the laws of the United States of America.
(applause) Do you have a motion?
I solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
The right hook.
Faithfully perform the duties of. The Milton Cultural Arts Committee.
The Milton Cultural.
Committee of the city.
Of the city.
And that I will support and defend the charter.
And that I will support and defend the charter.
thereof.
thereof.
And as well as the Constitution.
And as well as the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
(applause) Do you have a motion?
I solemnly swear and affirm.
Okay. Do I have a motion? From Councilmember Kuntz, second, from Councilmember Lusk. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. All right. I'll tell you what, I may, hold on just a minute, we'll do a swearing in, but we'll look, we'll do this next agenda item, and then we'll do both those, and then do pictures. Sudi, if you'll please call the next item.
Next item is consideration of a resolution, appointing a member to the Milton Cultural Arts Committee for District 3, Post 2, Agenda Item Number 17-118.
Okay. Rick?
Thanks. It's my pleasure tonight to nominate Barbara Peck to the Milton Cultural Arts Committee. Barbara is a native of New York. She graduated from Fisher College in Boston, Massachusetts with a degree in international law. She spent the majority of her career with General Electric in global ergonomics and other areas of environmental health and safety, and she also was a manager in GE Corporate Environmental Programs. Barbara's been living in Milton for a number of years. She's passionate about cultural arts. She also has been very active as a volunteer. She is a member of Better Together. She also is on the Board of Directors of Milton Grows Green. In our recent Literary Festival, she was the volunteer coordinator, helped run the whole program. She also heads up the Adopt a Road program as volunteer coordinator, and then she's been on the Earth Day Planning Committee in the past, and also has participated in Rivers Alive. And I would like to nominate Barbara Peck for District 3, Post 2, Cultural Arts Committee.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve Barbara Peck for District 3, Post 2, for the Cultural Arts Committee.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Kuntz, second, from Councilmember Lusk. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. All right. Let's, if we could, I'll have these Barbara and Ed's. Well, we'll do it one at a time, but I'll swear them in, and then we'll have councilmen. So, if you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I just solemnly swear and affirm.
You solemnly swear and affirm.
You guys know there's some kind of lookout.
(laughter)
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
The Board of Zoning Appeals Member.
The Board of Zoning Appeals Member.
Of the city.
Of the city.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
And I will support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the Constitution.
As well as the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the laws of the United States of America.
And the laws of the United States of America.
(applause) Do you have a motion?
I solemnly swear and affirm.
Okay. Do I have a motion? From Councilmember Kuntz, second, from Councilmember Lusk. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. All right. Let's, if we could, I'll have these Barbara and Ed's. Well, we'll do it one at a time, but I'll swear them in, and then we'll have councilmen. So, if you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I just solemnly swear and affirm.
You solemnly swear and affirm.
You guys know there's some kind of lookout.
(laughter)
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
The Board of Zoning Appeals Member.
The Board of Zoning Appeals Member.
Of the city.
Of the city.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
And I will support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the Constitution.
As well as the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the laws of the United States of America.
And the laws of the United States of America.
(applause) Do you have a motion?
I solemnly swear and affirm.
Okay. Do I have a motion? From Councilmember Kuntz, second, from Councilmember Lusk. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. All right. Okay. Sudi, if you would please call the next item.
Next item is presentation of Downtown Milton Crab Apple Placemaking Plan. This is being presented by Michelle McIntosh-Russ.
Yes. Good evening. As you know, this placemaking plan has been worked on for a long time. We started in July of last year with several community meetings at the library. The plan was built upon several previous plans that have been, happened in the Crab Apple area, most notably the vision document that we did when we became a city in 2011, the Crab Apple Conceptual Plan done by Lou Oliver with Whole Town Solutions. So, we built on that plan. This placemaking plan that we have a draft before you tonight set out to demonstrate using the existing zoning of the Form-based code, how future development could contribute and accentuate the walkable village that was described in the vision document. This includes identifying parks and sites, as well as village greens, which includes trails, also complete streets with sidewalk connections to facilitate increased pedestrian activity, and also to increase bike activity. We looked at parking options, as well as options to move traffic more efficiently throughout. On April 20th, we had our town hall meeting here to get additional community input before this meeting before you tonight. We feel that we have made all of the notifications, notation, sorry, and addressed the concerns to the extent that we could. We have the consulting firm here, TSW, with Tom Walsh and Sarah McCully here to present the plan overview. We are using this meeting tonight as a work session to present the plan, so if you have any questions tonight, we'd like it to be tonight as the meeting on the 15th. We will put that on the agenda for your review, for adoption, but we would rather if all the questions were answered tonight with our consultants being here. So, I introduce Tom Walsh and Sarah McCully with TSW. Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Tom Walsh with TSW. And, there's a... I think we need to make this. In 1993, I was able to leave Purgatory, which was Memphis, Tennessee, and move to Atlanta to work on Olympic projects. And what was so exciting about coming to Atlanta, I lived in downtown Midtown. Our office was one-minute walk, so I was able to walk. And in about 1889, I started designing walkable communities as well, in the first, Harbor Town in Memphis, Tennessee. But I was very excited to come to Atlanta, because at the time, Atlanta was known as the sprawl capital of the world. And what fascinated me was, could I come here and be part of a movement that changed that? And it couldn't be just me, it had to be communities. And what's so exciting in these years that have passed is that I have been privileged and honored, and our firm has been privileged and honored, to work on many, many communities such as yours in the Atlanta metro area, that have really challenged each other to design these communities that make it more of a live-work-play environment for the citizens. And you all have really, really worked very hard. And I cannot begin to thank all of you that have participated in this, in this process. What we were asked to do was come from the 50,000 to the 5,000 level and take a look at the plan and see how this area could start to function as a downtown walkable community, which you're already in the process of doing. So, you've gone through a number of studies. I think the most important aspect of this plan, and we're finding this in many communities, is that you're, at the end, you're really starting to solidify this, this area, and you need to really focus on the connectivity that you have left and the abilities to connect the community. So, you have some outlets, when you have the road that is on Crab Apple might be overused, you can take other aspects of it. So, we're going to look at that tonight. And then how do you change the area when you come into Crab Apple District? How does that become more pedestrian-friendly? So, we really started to focus on that. And we went through, as was pointed out by Michelle, many, many meetings, interviews, and a charrette process that we held over in the library, and I see familiar faces that were there. And again, we thank you for all participating that came to this. So, it was an important process. So, tonight, what we're going to do is we're going to focus on the placemaking intent, review the previous steps, which Sarah's going to take us through in a minute, some of the, the large diagrams that we developed. We're going to look at that charrette process and the outcome of it, and then the final recommendations. Now, here's the most important piece of the presentation. Our job is to facilitate and come, and help you come up with these ideas, but it ultimately is your ideas, and Ms. Thurman has been very good in helping us, you know, come up with ideas that will help make you a much stronger community. We don't live here, you live here, it is your plan, it is your responsibility to develop it. So, we want to give you a plan that you feel very strongly about and that you will work with, and hopefully that's what is a result of this, this process. So, I'll turn it over to Sarah for a couple of minutes.
This is a map just to orient where we are. Is the, can you see, can you see the mouse moving around here? Okay. With City Hall, and then Birmingham Highway, Crab Apple, and Mayfield, the library over here, and then the single-family residential in the northwest area, and then the schools. We did a series of, of maps to kind of start to understand the physical characteristics of the Crab Apple area. This first one shows the, what we define as community resources, which are things that help boost your community and are important things that residents should be able to walk to if possible. It's, as you can see in the map, the majority of these fall within about a half a mile as the crow flies radius of the crossroads in the core commercial area, which is a really good way to start looking at, you know, walkability and how connected things could be. This map is a, is a blow-up of the previous one. of the Form Based Code, how future development could contribute and accentuate the walkable village that was described in the vision document. This includes identifying parks and sites as well as village greens, which includes trails. Also, complete streets with sidewalk connections to facilitate increased pedestrian activity and also to increase bike activity. We looked at parking options as well as options to move traffic more efficiently throughout. On April 20th, we had our town hall meeting here to get additional community input before this meeting before you tonight. We feel that we have made all of the notifications, notation, sorry, and addressed the concerns to the extent that we could. We have the consulting firm here, TSW, with Tom Walsh and Sarah McCully here to present the plan overview. We are using this meeting tonight as a work session to present the plan. So if you have any questions tonight, we'd like it to be tonight. As the meeting on the 15th, we will put that on the agenda for your review, for adoption, but we would rather, if all the questions were answered tonight with our consultants being here. So I introduce Tom Walsh and Sarah McCully with TSW. Thanks.
Good evening, I'm Tom Walsh with TSW. And there's a... In 1993, I was able to leave Purgatory, which was Memphis, Tennessee, and move to Atlanta to work on Olympic projects. And what was so exciting about coming to Atlanta, I lived in downtown Midtown. Our office was one minute walk, so I was able to walk. And in about 1899, 1989, I started designing walkable communities as well in the first, Harbor Town in Memphis, Tennessee. But I was very excited to come to Atlanta because at the time, Atlanta was known as the sprawl capital of the world. And what fascinated me was, could I come here and be part of a movement that changed that? And it couldn't be just me, it had to be communities. And what's so exciting in these years that have passed is that I have been privileged and honored, and our firm has been privileged and honored, to work on many, many communities such as yours in the Atlanta metro area that have really challenged each other to design these communities that make it more of a live-work-play environment for the citizens. And you all have really, really worked very hard. And I cannot begin to thank all of you that have participated in this, in this process. What we were asked to do was come from the 50,000 to the 5,000 level and take a look at the plan and see how this area could start to function as a downtown walkable community, which you're already in the process of doing. So you've gone through a number of studies. I think the most important aspect of this plan, and we're finding this in many communities, is that you're, at the end, you're really starting to solidify this, this area. And you need to really focus on the connectivity that you have left and the abilities to connect the community. So you have some outlets when you have the road that is on Crab Apple might be overused. You can take other aspects of it. So we're going to look at that tonight. And then how do you change the area when you come into Crab Apple District? How does that become more pedestrian friendly? So we really started to focus on that. And we went through, as was pointed out by Michelle, many, many meetings, interviews, and a charrette process that we held over in the library. And I see familiar faces that were there. And again, we thank you for all participating that came to this. So it was an important process. So tonight, what we're going to do is we're going to focus on the placemaking intent, review the previous steps, which Sarah's going to take us through in a minute, some of the, the large diagrams that we developed. We're going to look at that charrette process and the outcome of it, and then the final recommendations. Now here's the most important piece of the presentation. Our job is to facilitate and come but, and help you come up with these ideas, but it ultimately is your ideas. And Ms. Thurman has been very good in helping us, you know, come up with ideas that will help make you a much stronger community. We don't live here, you live here. It is your plan, it is your responsibility to develop it. So we want to give you a plan that you feel very strongly about and that you will work with. And hopefully, that's what is a result of this, this process. So I'll turn it over to Sarah for a couple of minutes.
This is a map just to orient where we are. Is the, can you see? Can you see the mouse moving around here? Okay. With City Hall and then Birmingham Highway, Crab Apple and Mayfield, the library over here, and then the single-family residential in the northwest area, and then the, the schools. We did a series of, of maps to kind of start to understand the physical characteristics of the Crab Apple area. This first one shows the, what we define as community resources, which are things that help boost your community and are important things that residents should be able to walk to if possible. It's, as you can see in the map, the majority of these fall within about a half a mile as the crow flies radius of the crossroads in the core commercial area, which is a really good way to start looking at, you know, walkability and how connected things could be. This map is a, is a blow up of the previous one. Looking at the historic resources in the area, many of them, actually all of them, are not designated formally, but we realized the importance of preserving them when possible. And, you know, there's things in the Form Based Code that offer incentives for additional square footage and developments if the historic structures are preserved. And, but the key point here is that they can be demolished and redeveloped if the property owner decides to. We also created a map for the susceptibility to change. We just looked at a parcel-by-parcel basis. You know, would these change in the next 10 to 15 years or even sooner than that? The dark green shows parcels that would not. It mainly includes the community places like City Hall, the schools, the library, and then where everyone lives in their homes. The light green shows somewhat susceptible to change in the next, you know, 10 to 15 years. And a lot of those are land that's fairly vacant, but, or not utilized to its full potential. The dark brownish-orange, those are highly susceptible to change. And those, that land is even less well-used. Another map we looked at was the connectivity of the area. A lot of, this map kind of shows existing additions and potential. We went through a significant analysis portion where we reviewed all the previous plans. So some of that is captured in here with the important pieces being the gray dash lines that are the streets that were codified in the regulating plan for the Form Based Code. And then we also identified streets that could benefit from street scape enhancements. And those include Crab Apple Road in Birmingham because of the vehicular traffic and lack of really safe pedestrian facilities. Our subconsultant, Noel Consulting Group, also conducted a market study. This is a very, very basic review of it. They actually have like a 90-page document. But it shows how Milton is today and then the demand in Milton and within the study area. This is showing, you know, that there is room for residential growth over a phased period of time in multiple unit types, including single-family homes, flats, townhomes, and condominiums. And there is also room for retail growth and office growth over the next five years. However, there are perceived use with parking. And then the Form Based Code will ultimately limit the amount of growth that will occur in the future.
So after we collected all this data, it was time to do the charrette. The charrette process was first, we had tool design as well, which is specialized in walkable facilities such as pedestrian facilities and vehicular and bike facilities. So we did a walking audit before we started the charrette, which was great. We started at the high school and ultimately ended up at the library. Design work with all the consultants. We had landscape architects, we had planners and transportation and market analysis at the charrette at the library. Public was welcomed throughout the afternoon. It was an incredibly well-attended charrette from that standpoint. We had a number of people that were very interested in looking at what was going on, specifically in the east and west quadrant of the study area. It was open, we had an open house. We had, again, a great attendance from all of you and then a final presentation on, on that process. So ultimately, what we came up with was design goals and policy goals, which filtered down into the framework plan. The framework plan is what we wanted to focus on in the design was Crab Apple Road, the Birmingham Highway, and Mayfield Road. We wanted to look at the potential for parks. We had these two pieces of land that we had decided were really great and had sort of been offered up during the charrette process and before. Could we add additional trails into this system so we could have more connectivity? And then really focus on the northeast quadrant, the crossroads in the northwest quadrant around City Hall. And parking is always the issue with all small towns, especially when you're successful, how are you going to park? So we wanted to look at that as well. Again, Sarah brought this up. The connectivity part is the most important piece of this puzzle. Ultimately, you have limited ability to connect now because of what the development is already here. So I would her, hopefully and highly encourage you to develop these, these final pieces to this puzzle so you have some outlets. I always equate it to sort of like Decatur. I lived in Decatur for 12 years and you have Ponce that goes through. That's your Crab Apple. And then Hamilton might be your, your outlet, your Commerce Street. So it's, it's important to have these, these different pieces to that. And this was just a, we use this in the charrette where we show how if you have a gridded network, you can load a lot more vehicles and more safely than if you have just a collector system that was developed back in the 70s and 80s, which I wish would have never come. The other neat thing that came out of this is our, our marketing study. We started doing a analysis of all the available parking within the study area. You have some office buildings. And it works out perfect because you have office, which leaves at 5:00, and then the evening when people want to go to the restaurants, those parking lots are vacant. So you can have this shared parking now, or ability to do. So we found in a number of the quadrants, as you can see, even though it's a, it's within the quarter-mile range, the Baptist Church has 247. So Wednesday, it might not be available, but any other night, you might have 247 spaces. Up into the half-mile, you get to the middle school and then the elementary school is still within that quarter of a mile. So you have large bulk areas of parking that we could potentially use. And then as you notice in the, on the map, other places, and we're going to get into a little more detail of that in a minute, but we have a total of, in the northwest quadrant, 678. Your demand in the evening is 84, for example. And in the northeast quadrant, you have an existing of 610. And your peak evening demand is about 100. So we obviously have the spaces. How do we use them will be the question we try to answer in this presentation. The other piece of this was the, the two potential parks and the connectivity to the parks. And you see the green dots are potential pedestrian connections to the two small parks. So one in the northwest quadrant up at the top here, and then in the lower north, it's actually in the southern part of the northeast quadrant, you have this other smaller park that we're going to talk about. Then finally, it was the northwest and northeast quadrants. What could go in there? The mixed-use development, residential units, commercial and office. So what we defaulted to, fortunately, because I almost didn't do this, was to look at the zoning that we wrote a number of years ago. And it sort of gave us the answer of what could fall within these quadrants. And, and let me state, what's so important about this, we're trying to conceptually see what you could grow in these two quadrants. We weren't trying to design it. We're just kind of coming up with a scenario of what, what possible densities if you used your T5 and your T4 open as that. So you'll see some plans that, that suggest what could happen if you followed the zoning code. So in the northwest quadrant is T5, Crab Apple, and the crossroads, T4 open is elsewhere. We saw that we could use, and based on the analysis, the market analysis, residential, office, and commercial were the type of units that we could use. So with these recommendations, based on the market analysis, we started looking at mixed-use development, the two parks, the short-term, long-term parking considerations, the street scape enhancements, and the trail. So the, because there was, as you remember, Sarah showed the susceptibility map. And a lot of it is not susceptible to change because you're already developed with residential law. So we really only have these two small areas that we really could focus on. And that was the northwest and northeast quadrant and these two small parks. So the, the first study looked at, what are the possibility if we had 30, we could put 38,000 square feet of office over a phased period? 53 townhomes over a period of time could go into this area? 18,000 square feet of mixed use. We really tried to focus on what, what's that possibility? So you can see your new City Hall is, is located. The two new buildings that are under construction, this is Crab Apple, running east-west. And then you have the corner, the crossroads, where the gas station is. We saw a mixed use. I think it's a great, important corner to anchor ultimately in, in the future. So we wanted to suggest something that could go right there. Then we also, I think, we really studied what this parking area, we could get 78 at-grade parking. But if, if you decided and you could financially afford a parking deck, this is one of the suggested areas a parking deck could go. And you could do up to 83 spaces for each floor of the parking deck. So you could go up four floors and really substantially increase the number of parking spaces. We're dealing with that in Woodstock right now. We're coming up with a deck for them. They really need one. And I was not optimistic. It looks like it's going to work. We, we've got developers that have come in. And so it is possible to make this work, but it really takes private, public work to make, make these, these, these projects work. You have the Heritage, I said, I went to see Hamilton. I'm keeping thinking of Hamilton all the time. I meant Heritage Walkway. But you have Heritage Drive now that's running through, through City Hall. And then you have these other area that has not been developed. It could be temporary development near the, the new traffic circle that's going in. One other possibility has also come up is the possibility of two parks. And these parks are about the same size. If any of you have been down to the Panhandle and see, Seaside, it's that large green space at Seaside. You could have something that could add additional green space if you wanted that third element other than the two parks that we're going to talk about tonight. So now, we're going to talk about Crab Apple Road, and Sarah's going to talk about this. I want to talk about this one slide though because we saw young children doing the same thing as these adult women. And, you know, again, this is your community. If you want to leave it like this, you'll, you'll, you all will make that decision. But I'm telling you as a professional, the towns that I'm getting to work in, which are Woodstock and Alfred and all, all these towns throughout this area, they're making these hard decisions and they're narrowing and putting their roads on diets to make it more accessible, more pedestrian. Again, Decatur did the same thing with, with Ponce. And they've even become more aggressive in, in their road diets in, in recent years. Ultimately, the success of this small town ultimately will be this, this road right here and how you treat it. And right now, when I first, when we were going after this, before we were selected, I was taking photographs. And I, people just, they get at that stop sign or that, that crossroads. And men, when they take off, they're up to 45 miles an hour without any, any, um, any time because they got a good straightaway. So hopefully, this is something that can change with some of the suggestions Sarah's going to make.
So the Crab Apple Road street section right now, from building to building, is approximately 100 feet. So we decided that that could be the new right-of-way width. And we wanted to move the sidewalks closer to the fronts of the buildings so that people could walk to them very quickly. And then moving in from the sidewalks, there's a little bit of green space to buffer between the bike lanes that we have drawn on each side here. And these bike lanes connect over to our street section of Mayfield Road across the, the crossroads. So that's why they're there. And then we have on-street parking, occasional tree bulb-outs. And then we removed the deceleration lanes and created a center left-turn lane and then two traffic lanes. All of these elements kind of work together to reduce the, the sight view for drivers. So they want to drive slower along the street. And then kind of the, the left-turn lane makes the, the street more efficient because there's less car stacking in travel lanes. This is Birmingham Highway as it is today. Also kind of harsh for pedestrians and cyclists. And I, with the schools along the eastern edge of that road, it's important to make sure the pedestrian facilities are in, you know, are actually very usable and wide enough, particularly if students want to walk to school. This street actually is wider, closer to the crossroads up to, I think about the high school, and then it reduces by about 20 feet. So we did two separate street sections for this road as a concept. Both, well, this one adds wider sidewalks, making them about 10 feet, and then a six-foot buffer between the on-street parking that we are adding from the crossroads north to basically the, the elementary school. And then there's, we added some street trees and about 32 on-street parking spots. The turn portion of the street has wider sidewalks and again, a wider buffer between the vehicular traffic and the sidewalks so that pedestrians feel a little bit safer walking along the street. And then, I forgot to mention on the previous one, but on both of them, sharrows are added so that cyclists also feel like they have more of a right to use the street. The first park we're going to talk about is Crab Apple Park. This one is the larger parcel up on Birmingham Highway on the western side of the street. It has two property owners and the, the land that we use for the concept is about 21 acres. It's primarily a passive park with multiple kind of community, small passive amenities, and then an internal trail system that also connects to the schools and the other small park that Tom will talk about later over in the northeast quadrant. You can see here on the, the plan that we maintained a lot of the tree canopy that's currently on the land. There's the internal trail network and orchard, community garden, some parking for people who want to drive to the, to the park, and then open lawns for, you know, picnics or throwing a football or anything like that.
So, I'm sorry, on, on the northeast and southeast quadrants, the same thing, we are, we're looking at the possibility of what could go on this based on the code. And as you can see, we have 51 townhouses, six single-family, 26 live-work. It could be any combination of these, these things. I mean, you can change it around. The code allows you enough flexibility, but this is, this is sort of what we used as our, our guide for, for this area. So here's, we're at the crossroads right here. We, we have a number of historical properties that do run into this area. So we want to try to see if we can preserve as many of those as possible. There's a couple that would be at risk along Mayfield, along this edge of, of the street. The important piece of this is we created a fairly large parking area that I'm going to talk about when I go to the enlargement of this. We have, again, some mixed use. And we have a wounded street, which I'm going to talk about in a little more detail along this edge. So we're really getting good penetration into the site and using more of a gridded type system, potential road heading north off of the Charlotte Drive extension. So this became a, a great area where we could develop a lot of parking because we're still, again, following the code. We can get up to 205 cars within this, and this all within that quarter-mile, half-mile radius. This is a four-bay parking area. So if you wanted to put a deck, you could have a fairly sizable deck within this area without any, any problem. We also wanted to create a new street that allowed to be, that could be closed off at any given time for events that you might have. So it might become your festival street because of the parking adjacencies and so forth, mixed use. And we have a fairly substantial parking. And then Milton's is on, anchoring the corner with the Cotton Gin Building as well. So we really have this very elegant little commercial district on this northeast quadrant. So that, that road which we were just talking about, you share the street. This one actually had, this street has a curb, but a lot of times, we'll design these streets without any curves. We're doing that in Lake City, South Carolina, right now, where it's just one street. So you can close it off for festivals or you can have some limited parking during the day. And so it's, it's a multi-functional type street and a number of paving changes to give it some interest. Also, we saw the commercial houses as being fairly small on the site, fitting the character of your area as well, not the big monolithic buildings that you might find in downtown Atlanta that, that we're doing. So Mayfield Road was also a, a, a road system that, in this case, it, there's a, already money set aside. So you, you're going to have this existing sidewalk that's coming in. But we thought we could have a dual bicycle lane off, this is protected. This has been done in northern cities in Europe quite a bit. This has been done in northern cities in Europe quite a bit. It would be a great example of road system here. I'd love to see y'all implement this. And then some parallel parking on the northern side of the street. We also had a small park in this area, which is the existing lake with some boardwalk. Again, it's more of a passive, a small amphitheater, but not one, it might hold just 200 or 300 people at the most. And that community garden setup as well. So it's meant to be an elegant, small, little park that can be used by the surrounding neighborhoods in this area. So the other piece of this was now looking at surface parking versus structured parking. And it really, it became apparent that it's fairly expensive to put in structure. I mean, each space, I was just working on the project in Woodstock today, and we had a developer in from Washington, D.C. And there's going to be some subsurface parking on this deck, and that's $30,000 of space. And then the above-surface parking is about $18,000 of space. So structured parking is expensive, and so they're working with the city on how that can be paid for with the project that we're designing for that area. So we really looked at one other way of doing this was valet parking. Is there a way to set this up? Now, we didn't invite a company in. It just was a thought that because of the inventory that you have, could you set up a series of valet stations? And you have these three days that are really your peak time. You have the parking inventory to do it, so why not go that way? And it's a much more inexpensive route. So we, the next step in this project is to do a study, invite one of those groups in and see how that could effectively work in your area. We did not go into that kind of depth for this part of the commission. So the parking concept shows, the stars on the map here are potential stations where they could occur throughout the area. So it just, again, it sets up very nicely with all this parking and the office spaces that you have. You have the inventory to be able to valet park it ultimately. So with that, we'll talk about implementation.
So the implementation is broken into project types rather than a phased timeline because a lot of them, the timelines change, and that's very difficult to predict. So the first set of projects are the valet parking strategy that Tom was talking about. And that's having the city work with a valet management company and see if it's feasible, see if it would work with your existing inventory, and then start using it if it's decided that that's what you want to do. And then start to study the program and see how well it mitigates the parking problems that we have. The next one is the streetscape enhancements, and that's all the Crab Apple Road, Birmingham Highway, and Mayfield Road suggestions, recommendations that we made. One of the projects from this is, right now, the crossroads will be getting a few left-turn lanes. So we also looked at a longer term, 10 to 15 years down the road, the potential for a roundabout at this intersection. If the left-turn lanes start to, I mean, they'll be effective in the first place, but then if traffic gets worse, the roundabout may be helpful in the future. The next set is the parks and, both the larger park, Crab Apple Park and Mayfield Park, and then the trail systems connecting them and the schools. A lot of that will be land acquisition, getting the designs finalized and approved, and then ultimately constructing them. The fourth set is the parking deck feasibility. And ideally, the first set with the metrics for studying the valet parking would lead to, you know, deciding if you need a parking deck and designing it and just constructing it. We've identified the two locations that may work for it, but it will come down to if it's possible. And then finally, the last set of projects are the new street constructions. A lot of the streets that we've recommended are, the white ones are already in the regulating plan. However, we have a few other ones that we've recommended for smaller local street connections. And if those are something you want, it would be good to codify those as well and put them in the regulating plan. And the rest of them are just, in this table, are just adding the streets and constructing them. So some of the first steps that can be taken are the valet parking, making policy changes through the regulating plan where needed, and then acquiring land and right-of-way to start the streetscape enhancements and the park construction. With the development, we see that as concurrent projects based on the private market. So those can happen at any point in time regardless of when the streets are built. But ideally, it would be a good thing to really focus on the street network and make sure that that's in place so that the development in the future respects that and can be more flexible. So our next steps are revisions to our report based on this presentation, and then hopefully have adoption in two weeks on the 15th.
Okay. I'll open up for questions or comments. Karen?
I'll start off by saying thank y'all for meeting with me. I've been working on Crab Apple for 25-plus years now. And as you can tell, I'm very opinionated and very passionate about it. I like some of the changes you made, the fact that we now have a plan that I feel like conforms much closer to what our code says. It doesn't, it has the parking islands where parking islands have to be. As you know that we have to have a parking island every six or seven spaces. This now does show that. We don't allow buildings of townhomes of more than six units together without a space. It's taking care of that, so I really appreciate that. I'm still not a fan of valet parking. If you've ever had your car lost by a valet parking person, which I did in Savannah, if you remember. And it took them a good while, well, it took them about four hours to find my car and another four or five hours to find the keys to my car.
I thought we'd never hear the end of it.
It was not a good situation. So personally, I'm not a big fan of valet parking. I don't think it's worked that well at Avalon. So I'd like to make sure that whatever development would come for the near future in Crab Apple, we can continue to require them to have the parking on-site that is required in our code, the number of spaces based on the use of the property, so.
May I say something? I agree. You have the inventory and the walking distance that, I think another way to approach it is to deal with the people that own office and say, look, we want to have a, let's work together and allow people to park in our, you're parking after 6 o'clock. And anyone can park within this area and be at the restaurant within less than five-minute walk. So you have the walkability. So the valet was an alternative for people that did not want to do that five-minute walk. But I agree with you. If you could work it out and even pay maps and, I mean, a lot of towns are doing apps so you can come into the town and you can push the app and it'll tell you where to park. So I think there's great ways to do that. So I would concur with you to, I mean, that is a.
And most of us can use a little walking, so.
Yeah, exactly. Rick?
Yeah, I have a question on the Mayfield Road section. I know where you showed the redevelopment of the road and sidewalks and that. Looking at that road today, it's pretty narrow with the structures that are right on top of that. Does that require us to actually acquire additional right-of-way? I guess I don't understand how we could put the sidewalks and the street, the configuration that you showed in the pictures, that section that would be east of, like Milton's and the Cotton Gin, because those homes are on top and the businesses are almost on top of the road.
On the south side, it's just the six-foot sidewalk that's going in from the federal funding. So nothing would change there. But on the north side, there, it's, I didn't, we didn't mention it, but there would have to be some right-of-way acquisition there to get more land from the property owners. And we viewed it as something that the developers could do as, you know, they assemble parcels and just to make the connectivity to their developments better.
So that's kind of tied into the premise of that pass-through street that could be closed for events?
Yes.
Because I know with the existing buildings, some of those older homes, there's no way we could fit anything in there. It'd be challenging even to put a sidewalk in there today.
Right.
Okay.
Phil?
On one of your slides, you mentioned mid-street crosswalks. What are the guidelines, I guess, for, or are they any guidelines for installing crosswalks particularly on state highways like this? I know Alpharetta has done it in a few cases down there on Main Street, particularly by City Hall where they have pedestrian-activated crosswalk flashers. What I'm more interested, or most interested in, I guess, is pedestrian traffic between the crossroads in the elementary school, middle school, and the high school. There's a lot of student activity both morning and evening. It's a long stretch between Brayburn and School Drive. What kind of recommendations would you have in that stretch of highway?
Well, Tool Design was our consultant on that, and unfortunately, they're not here to answer that question. But I'm going to try to answer it as best I can. You go through, you work with the state in a state highway for the, to set up a HAWK system. And the premise is to show where pedestrian, the heavy pedestrian crossing is. Alpharetta, they have a commercial district that comes across to a district that's being developed. So that was a no-brainer for them to work with the state on that. And they have a transportation guy, and Carter could work with the state on that. So that's my understanding of it. I'm not, again, we would need somebody like Tool Design, but we certainly will add that to our document to make sure that that's addressed on how that, at least laying out the steps for that process.
Maybe one other question regarding trail systems, proposed trail systems you're showing on your drawings. You get into the weeds as far as design on those? Are you, have you referred to Milton's design guidelines on trails? Or haven't you drilled down that further?
No, we had a lot more trails initially in the Shret, which we've had to eliminate from the plan, but these are just suggestions where they might go. So we didn't go further down and look at the Milton guidelines on that. But based on the Shret, those, these trails evolved from that, right? I mean, we had a number of people. I wasn't in, I was doing the northeast quadrant. Sarah and some of my other people here were working on the trail system.
Was there an attempt with that preliminary design on trails to tie into the utility?
Yes, we really, I was very excited about that. I, in my former life back in the late 80s and 90s, I did a lot of those trails. One in Germantown, Tennessee, a 22-mile on utility system. And I went to Raleigh, North Carolina, and did a two-week research on that and found that most neighborhoods embraced these trails in the rightways because it increased their property value. We found that a number of property owners in this area do not agree with that. And so I'm pretty sure fought pretty hard because they're not in the plan any longer.
They were very outspoken against trails in their backyard. It was kind of surprising, but they were very, very outspoken against trails in their yard.
I'm hoping that someday in the future you'll, I mean, that would really connect. I live on the Belt Line, and I ride my bike to work every day because I don't have to drive a car any longer. And that could happen easily within Milton, that you could be in a golf cart or a bike because you have such great connectivity with these utility systems. But at the moment, it doesn't seem like it's in the cards.
Speaking of golf cart, do you have any trails, streets, golf cart parking areas or anything as part of this plan?
No, I mean, again, we're still at 5,000 feet, so we just couldn't get into that. Again, remember, these plans aren't designed to be implemented. These were just concepts to test the theory of your code. Especially on the northeast quadrant, a number of pieces of property still have to be assembled to be able to even remotely resemble what's on this plan. These are just concept ideas to show how you might be able to evolve the east side of the quadrant.
And I want to just make a comment, too, for the public, that, you know, these are concept plans. And, you know, if you want to call them a roadmap, but again, everybody has a roadmap. Doesn't mean you have to actually drive that way. You could take detour. So as Tom said, you know, this is looking at it from above, kind of showing what could, if the landowners, you know, within the existing zoning or codes, what they can do. So again, none of this is, it's a great concept. It gives us some ideas of what can happen, but it's not verbatim that this is exactly what has to happen. Bert?
So on your concept, you know, where you showed the X amount of square footage of retail or this many units of townhouses, this, that, and the other, that all currently works, that works within our, our nubrezonings or anything like that? It's under what we've already approved?
It follows all within, within the guidelines of the zoning.
Thank you.
And I wonder if you could show us the section of the road, Crab Apple Road, starting back at the intersection of Birmingham and Broadwell Road up to, I guess, past some of the commercial corridors. Do you have anything planned or suggested as far as crosswalk? We saw the picture of the people crossing. I agree, that's dangerous trying to get across there. That's one of the complaints I hear is, how do we get across where, let's say, called Crab Apple Market on the north side and then the residential and other business on the south side of Crab Apple Road? What recommendations do you have? What can we do? Because that's an issue right now. People are not going to walk down to the corner of Birmingham Highway and Crab Apple and cross to go over. They're going to cut across the street. What can we do? Any suggestions for immediate improvement of safety?
What we're going to do is, we will show examples where it's being done in other parts of the city metro area and include that as an idea. In here, do we have, I thought we.
At each intersection along Crab Apple between the new roundabout and the crossroads, we have crosswalks on all four approaches. And then we also show, it might be a little hard to see on the plan, but there's this little walk pathway here coming through the existing and then the under-construction buildings. And then there's a mid-block crossing there. There's a leader going up to it right here.
And so we'll show 3D examples of that, of what you might do with a HAWK system or something to stop vehicles at one of these intersections.
Okay, and that could be something that would tie into, because again, that's a state road there, correct?
Yeah. But the neat thing, Georgia's starting to really come around in the small urban, small-town areas and really work. We had an example, if y'all have been downtown, that was a state road, Main Street. And we were able to put 60-degree parking, bulbouts in the area, so it slows the traffic down. And we created, because we had time, a fairly gridded system now that they're implementing on both, well, actually, on the west side of the street. There's going to be two additional streets that run parallel to Main. So that's possible with the show this year, too.
Okay, I guess that'd be something I'd be interested in. What could practically be done even in the short term in that area to try to bring safety and get, if we're trying to make this more walkable, what can you do in that area?
Great. Okay, Bert?
What do we think that the round of this new road, Heritage Walk, is going to take off of Crab Apple Road?
It's a good question.
If it ever gets finished.
I don't have those numbers in front of me, but, you know, one of the things that we've always said is that the primary route is going to be still 372 through the Crab Apple area. Heritage Walk was really intended to be a relief when the intersection itself probably didn't have the capacity that we needed it to have. So as with any other situation, traffic's going to find the path of least resistance. And while we have some design numbers that we've used in the development of the typical section for the road, I don't know what those are off the top of my head.
But it's not going to solve the issue. You know, the walking, you know, it's not going to become a ghost town.
No, I mean, it shouldn't. And we've had some discussions with GDOT about the pedestrian connectivity on both sides of the road. And they've certainly shown an interest to work with us in developing some solutions with that. One of the things that we wanted to get into place before we made some final decisions was the roundabout and Heritage Walk, so we could understand really what the impact of it's going to be. As we move forward to that, GDOT has also expressed an interest in providing some safety funds that would be available, too. And I don't know if you remember, but in the original design, we had some medians and things in 372. In this section of 372, the Crab Apple Road section, to try and provide some additional refuge for pedestrians. As we move through the design, some of those got value engineered out with the anticipation of coming back in the future with some of those safety funds, look at some alternatives to pedestrian connectivity within the area.
And the existing 372 will remain this route, Heritage Walk will be a city road?
That's correct. So it's a temporary, Heritage Walk is a temporary state route to allow them to expend funds and do the construction. But once that's completed, it'll be turned back over to the city.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Thank you very much, obviously, for everything you've done for being here tonight. And we look forward to moving forward.
Okay, so I think, uh, I adjusted the agenda. We'll go back to executive session with, to discuss personnel, so if I have a motion to do so.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion, Councilman Thurman, second, Councilmember Moore, to move it to executive session to discuss personnel. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mozart Symphony Number Thirty Four. You could hear the exuberance in those notes he wrote as he was about to head for Vienna, where he could enjoy his life as a freelance musician. Sir Neville Mariner conducting Academy of St. Martin in the Fields. So it's music by Mozart heard here on WQXR. Andrew Tyson. You know him? Kind of sounds like a guy who could live on the third floor or next door. Well, he's a pianist, grew up in Durham, North Carolina. One newspaper says he is the real poet of the piano. You're gonna get to hear him playing music by Chopin coming up.
With April showers behind us, we just have May flowers to enjoy. And spring has really sprung in New York. It's glorious to see. Great music is always in bloom at WQXR, where we'll have blissful Mozart, spirited Mendelssohn, your morning Bach and much more. Jeff Spurgeon here. Join me for morning music in full bloom. Just set your alarm to wake up with WQXR.
Your home for the greatest music. Classical New York. WQXR.
Andrew Tyson has been called the real poet of the piano. You heard him playing music by the original poet of the piano, Frederick Chopin, is impromptu number three. You're listening to WQXR. We've got some music for the first day of May? First night of May? How about that? The first evening of May? This is the Overture called "May Night", music by Rimsky-Korsakov. Gerard Schwartz is conducting the Seattle Symphony.
Do I have a motion to reconvene?
No move.
Second motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So he's not here, so I will tell her. Let's see where we are.
We've still got a lot on our agenda.
Yep. I'm on page two, item seven, number one.
First presentation.
First presentation.
Yep. All right, Sudi, we had a motion and a second to reconvene, and it passed. One, two, three, four, every unanimously of those here, so. All right. Please, Sudi, I'll let you read the next item while we wait for everybody to...
Our next item is consideration of an ordinance of the city of Milton, Georgia, to amend Chapter Four, Alcoholic Beverages of the Code of the City of Milton, Georgia. Comprehensive amendments, Agenda Item Number Seventeen One One One.
Okay. I have a motion on the first presentation.
We are all moved to approve the reading of the first presentation item.
Second. Okay, I have a motion for Councilmember Luss, second by Councilmember Coontz. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That's unanimous without Councilmember Thurman voting, so. All right. Next item is a public hearing. Sudi, if you'll please call this item.
This is an alcohol beverage license application public hearing. Consideration of the issuance of an alcohol beverage license to Rida Investments LLC, doing business as Shell Food Mart, 15840 Birmingham Highway, Milton, Georgia 30004. Agenda Item Number Seventeen One One Two. Ms. Bernadette Harville.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This applicant has met all requirements and staff recommends approval.
Okay. Are there any questions on this? Okay, I'll open up for motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Seventeen Dash One One Two.
Second. Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Longoria. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous.
Thank you.
You know what? I need to make sure, though, did we have any public comment?
We did not, sir.
Excuse me?
We did not.
Okay, all right. No, so I'll close the hearing then. Okay. Do we need point of order? Since I didn't close the hearing before we voted, is that an issue? Or we did not have any public hearing? Or any public comment?
Nobody submitted a public comment.
Yeah, I don't have any comment there, so just to make sure. Okay, Sudi, if you will please call the next item.
Next public hearing is consideration of an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Milton, Georgia, to adopt amendments to the fiscal 2017 budget for each fund of the city of Milton, Georgia, amending the amount shown in each budget as expenditures, amending the several items of revenue anticipation, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations, and prohibiting expenditures to exceed actual funding available. Agenda Item Number Seventeen Zero Nine Seven. First presentation was at the April 24th City Council meeting. Ms. Stacy Ingless.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You have to forgive my voice. I've been talking all day and something in the air, the pollen, I think, is really aggravating my sinuses, so I will cover briefly what the amendments are. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer any specific questions. So as you know, we do mid-year budget amendments every year to right-size the budget based on actuals to date and what we anticipate happening before the end of the fiscal year. So what we're proposing right now is a revenue increase of $156,768 and an expenditure appropriation increase of $29,624. So we're actually adding to the fund balance $127,144 to highlight some of the revenue appropriation adjustments. In previous years, we've watched insurance premium tax increase steadily. And looking at last year's collections, they were over $2 million, and so we anticipate the 2017 collections to also be over $2 million. And we're proposing a $200,000 increase to this particular line item. That is actually revenue sources not received until after the fiscal year. And so when we go through the budget process, we won't know what the revenue collections are for the past fiscal year before we get to the new fiscal year. So it's one of those really funky revenue sources. So we would just, we always have to amend it at mid-year. Financial institution tax is coming in lower than anticipated, so we're decreasing that line item by $7,850. There are several donations that were received. One for the twenty-year or the ten-year anniversary of $20,000, the fireworks banquet of $600, and Joyful Souls Camp of $2,400. And the appropriation for the expenditure lines are also increased in those particular departments. Cell tower leases. We are moving that line item from the general fund and putting it into the capital projects fund. In December 2014, we passed a resolution that stated that any revenues received from cell towers were going to go for paying... Sorry. We're gonna go into the conservation efforts of the city, so those are all budgeted into the capital projects fund, so we're just moving that line item. And insurance proceeds of $17,656 and reimbursements received from Hyda of $1,0374. Make-up remaining proposed amendments, and they are offset by increases in the correlating expenditure line items. Any questions there before I move on?
Questions on those items?
Okay, moving on to the expenditures. In the city clerks department, there's a $26,000 decrease in the Granicus line item. We're moving that into the IT department. That is where we pay for most of our maintenance contracts for IT-related functions. And so you'll see that correlating increase in the IT department for the $26,000. There's also a $1880 increase of EMS training aids that's coming from the fire department to cover the maintenance cost of that particular software. We need outreach engagement. That's where you get the $20,000 for the ten-year anniversary, the donations that we received. In the police department, this is where you see all of the market adjustments that we talked about previously. So there, all of those are explained in the detail for the budget amendments at the bottom of the spreadsheet. I'll be happy to go into any of those particular details if you want me to. In the fire department, same thing, market adjustments. We've already discussed those previously, and this is just amending those as we discussed. There's also a few other adjustments in there. One for insurance proceeds to offset the damage for a vehicle that we abstained, we... I can't think of a word I want to say, sorry. I'm tired, it's been a long day. $2,400 in the Parks and Recreation Department to offset the donations we received for Joyful Souls. In debt service, we have an increase of $134,400. That's coming, we're offsetting that with contingency money. This is to increase or to pay for the interest payment on the debt service that we have that wasn't initially budgeted for. Questions on that? Another financing... Sorry?
No.
Okay. Other financing uses, you'll see the $77,412 is going to the capital projects fund. And looks like we had a little mistake. At the $134,400, it should be coming out of contingency. It didn't include it on this particular spreadsheet. We'll get that. Oh, there it is. Sorry, I'm going through my spreadsheets, and it looks like I messed up and put the wrong description on the wrong department. $77,412 is moving the cell tower lease from general fund over to the capital projects fund. And other costs, you'll see the $134,400 moving from contingency to cover the debt service lease. In the capital projects fund, there are various amendments that we have there. $17,000 in true recompense for revenues. We're increasing that item. Seventeen thousand in, um, true recompense for revenues, we're increasing that line item to offset or to account for revenues that we received, and you'll see a corresponding expenditure line item under the, um, comm dev department of seventeen thousand dollars for true recompense, or for, to plant trees. This three thousand dollars in the HIDA stipend, um, to cover money that we received from the HIDA officer that we had down there for his car. All right, let me go through these amendments really quick. In the general government buildings facilities, um, we're transferring thirty thousand dollars from signage and to cover the, um, city hall signs that we had placed here. In the general government buildings under the facility, um, state right nine court, fire, police facilities, we're moving that from police and putting it into, um, general government buildings, so we're moving, moving one department into the other.
Question while you're there, and I can't hear you very well, though.
I'm sorry, my voice is gone.
No, I don't think, I think it's our sound system, but, uh, can you show me or indicate in here where we've made provisions for a facilities manager?
Facilities manager is gonna be in the general, I mean, the general fund. That's already in the salaries line item in the public works department.
It wasn't the subject of an amendment.
Oh, okay.
Right, this is just the facility itself in state right nine for the police, fire, and court facility. It was currently accounted for in the police department, and we're moving it from that department into the general government buildings department because it didn't just pertain to police. We wanted to make sure that we got it in the right department. Did you, is there any questions about that particular fund?
I just had one other question. Where are our impact free, uh, fee revenue reflected in here?
So, right now, we didn't, um, account for any amendments to impact fees, um, because we do that amendment at the end of the fiscal year, because we want to account for all of the fees that have been occurred, that have, um, been brought in. But if you look at last fiscal year, we included those in the particular line items that they pertain to, um, and I can get you those details.
How are we doing with impact fees compared to what we had originally budgeted? Have we even looked at that?
Um, I'm gonna have to get back with you on that.
That's fine.
Any other questions on capital projects fund? In the capital grant fund, we are increasing revenues and increasing expenditures related to the LMIC funds that we received, those are going for pavement management, and so when we receive those funds, we just account for them accordingly. And that's all I have for you tonight.
Okay, any questions? Do you have any public comment on this item, Sudi?
We do not, sir.
Okay, I'll, um, I'll close the hearing on that then. Right, we don't have any zoning items, so let's move to unfinished business. Sudi, if you'd please call those items.
This item is consideration of an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Milton, Georgia, to adopt amendments to the fiscal two thousand seventeen budget for each fund of the city of Milton, Georgia, amending the amount shown in each budget as expenditures, amending the several items of revenue anticipations, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations, and prohibiting expenditures to exceed actual funding available. Agenda item number seventeen zero nine seven. First presentation was at the April twenty-fourth meeting, the public hearing was held this evening, Ms. Stacy Inglis.
I'd like to ask that you approve the amendments as presented, um, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any, any questions? All right, um, I will open for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item Seventeen dash zero nine seven.
Second.
Okay, we'll have a motion from Councilmember Hewitt, I believe a second from Councilmember Longoria. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Stacy. All right, Sudi, we'll move on to new business, if you'll please call that item.
This item is consideration of a resolution to establish a fixed-rate civil appearance fee for law enforcement officers of the city of Milton. Agenda item number seventeen one one three, Chief Rich Austin.
Mayor, members of council, uh, this resolution would allow the police department to retain control, uh, over the fee that our employees, uh, charge to appear in legal proceedings in cases where they've been subpoenaed in civil matters. Cases typically involve litigation between two private parties. Uh, there's already a provision for this under, uh, Georgia code. The code also states a municipality will set the fee, um, when I, under my perusal, I discovered we did not have a set fee for that. Uh, so this resolution would allow the police department to keep the fee reasonable and equitable for our citizens and, uh, and others that need the expertise of police officers in civil matters. They would only be, uh, allowed to charge if they are appearing in an off-duty capacity, otherwise they would be paid, uh, under the city of Milton, as usual court time.
Okay, is there any questions for Chief on that? Okay. Then, uh, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item Number Seventeen dash one one three.
Second. Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Longoria, second from Councilmember Hewitt, for approval. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you, Chief. All right, so move on. Sudi, if you'll please on the next business item.
This item is consideration of a resolution to accept donation of a firearm. Agenda item number seventeen one one four, Chief Rich Austin.
Mayor, members of council, this is a resolution, um, to accept a firearm by Mr. Harry Schwartz, uh, was a gift to the police department. He's a resident of the North Fulton area, and he, uh, just offered this a, as a gift, as he does many, uh, of the North Fulton police departments, he's just a law enforcement supporter. Uh, we've inspected the weapon, it's high-quality, it's a DP-12 shotgun, and we recommend that we accept a gift.
Okay, any questions on that? Bill?
Can we examine that?
Sure. Absolutely.
Can't have any bullets.
I just wanted, this would be deployed to our tactical unit, it's more of a...
Okay.
Not one we would have on the street every day.
It's a twelve-gauge, I assume.
Right.
I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor? I'll move to approve a resolution to accept a donation of a firearm, Agenda Item Number One Seven dash one one four.
Second.
Okay, got a motion from Councilmember Lusk, second by Councilmember Thurman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, Sudi, if you'll please say on the next new business item that's on our agenda.
This item is council consideration and appointment of Milton Greenspace Advisory Committee members, Agenda Item Number Seventeen One One Six.
Okay. I don't know if staff wants to take, but I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead and, and take this unless there's anything staff needs to say first on this. We're good. As, as you know, we've, uh, we have, have advertised and had a very good turnout for folks, people that were interested in serving on this committee, it's a very important committee. Um, it's the people that are gonna help make the decisions on where all of our tax dollars are spent on green space and, and for our, our bond. So, um, we had, I believe it's over thirty applications, and in looking through all of them, I, I would say, and I'm sure council would agree, they're all very high-quality, qualified, great citizens of Milton, so, um, we, we did need to narrow it down to a, a, a committee of five or no more than seven, so obviously, um, there are several people that could have served and, and would certainly have done a good job, so it was definitely a, a hard decision, but, uh, um, the, I have a slate of candidates to serve on that board that I'm gonna present, um, right now, so, but again, I wanna, you know, say that, uh, we're very thankful for everybody that, uh, that applied for the position, and, and again, they were, um, didn't see any that weren't worthy of, of being on that committee, so, um, and I'm gonna read these in no particular order, just, um, alphabetical. Mr. Robert Brannon, Robin Fixon, Fichton, Robin Gray, Curtis Mills, Mark Wally, Steve Wheeler, and Colt, Colt Whitall. And also add that, um, as best as possible, these folks are spread, spread across the, uh, the city and the different districts, so, um, we wanted to also take into account, geographical locations, so that, uh, we felt the whole city would be, be represented, so. With that, I will, uh, open up for a motion or any discussion on that. Do we need a public comment? Um, I'm not sure if we... I don't know that we would have.
We do not, sir.
And it's not here on second, no, but.
That's the case, Mayor. I'd like to, uh, promote a, a motion to consider and, uh, an appointment of Milton Greenspace Advisory Committee members as, uh, called out in the slate of members that you have just read on.
Second. Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Lusk for approval of the names that were read out into the record, and a second by Councilmember Coontz. Any discussion? Joe?
Yeah, so I've gone sort of back and forth on this, I think you guys know, I commented in the meeting where we voted on how we were gonna do this and suggested that putting together a slate would be a very difficult thing to do, so I think that, um, and I'm just gonna say, I'm very surprised at how quickly we were able to get that done. So I didn't think it'd be nice if I criticized up front and then didn't, you know, pat everybody on the back for a job well done, so, um, but I do still have some ongoing concerns about, you know, what do we do if we leave somebody from the board and stuff like that, but overall, I thought the process went pretty smoothly, so.
Bert?
Along those same lines, I was, uh, I was in agreement with Councilmember Longoria on the, the way we picked this board, and, um, my vote tonight will not, uh, be an indictment on any of the folks on the slate, but I'm gonna vote with what I spoke about the other night, uh, and vote against this.
Anybody else? Matt, did you say you want some?
You know, I just think as of overall, there's a lot of discussion involved in this process, I wanna commend staff for a lot of the work that you've done, Kathy, I know you spent a lot of time on this too, um, and, um, with where we are, you know, I think we got seven members out of thirty very qualified candidates, it was not an easy process to go through, um, but, you know, I, I think that it was just a lot of good work by a lot of good people, and just wanted to say that.
Okay. All right, there's no more discussion, I have a motion, uh, and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, looks like we've got, uh, we've got the numbers, we have five, four, and two against. Okay, moving on, um, to reports, I, I, I wanna just, uh, throw out a quick word of thank you to, uh, not only our staff, um, council, our vendors, everybody that, uh, was, was part of our, our ribbon cutting and grand opening of city hall and the celebration there, um, just thought it was a, a wonderful, wonderful celebration, uh, lots of citizens were there, I think they really enjoyed themselves touring city hall, um, having dinner out on the grounds, having the ribbon cutting, uh, heard lots, lots and lots of, of compliments, um, you know, again, I'm always, uh, don't wanna necessarily mention names, but Courtney and, and, um, Shannon and, and Robin and, and Kathy Field, um, you know, as well as everybody else, you know, Carter, all our staff really, um, just did, did a great job, and I think it was a, was a wonderful event, so, thank you guys. Anything, council, anybody have anything? Karen?
I just wanted to say that I really enjoyed the firefighter's retirement breakfast on, uh, Saturday, and if they decide to ever quit, uh, being firefighters, I think they have another job calling for them, because it was an excellent breakfast, so, uh, but it was, it was very good, it was a very emotional morning, um, uh, you could tell how much the city had meant to these guys and how much their fellow firefighters meant to them, so it truly is a brotherhood, we heard that again and again, but, uh, it truly is a brotherhood, and I hope that the three of them that have decided to spend a little more time fishing will still come and visit us on a regular basis.
Okay, Bill?
Yeah, I think one of the points that was brought up, uh, during that breakfast was, um, the three that were represented there that morning had a combined total tenure in the fire service of over a hundred years, so we're, we're losing a big, uh, chunk of our experience out there, and I'm sure the chief can, uh, can rally up and, uh, hopefully find some replacements out there. It's gonna be tough to replace that length of service out there, it's good folks.
Yep, yep, it's great, great breakfast, and just an honor to, uh, to be with those guys. All right, um, we'll open up staff reports.
Here's our first one. First one is, uh, I'll let them go, I'll close with that. Uh, it'll be fire.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Councilman Thurman, you, uh, kinda stole my opening line there, so, um, I, I do wanna thank, uh, council and city management that came out Saturday morning, um, it's truly appreciated and, and well-received by everybody, so thank you for, for all the support, um, those guys truly do appreciate it, and we all do, so thank you. The other thing I wanted to bring up is the House Bill one forty-six, the firefighter's cancer insurance benefits, I'm not sure if you're all aware about this bill that's expected to be signed by the governor on Thursday, um, but it does have an impact to every fire department in the state, as well as the community, um, or the municipality that they're serving. And I'll, I'll just read you quickly what the bill says, it requires all legally organized fire departments to provide a lump sum payment to any firefighter diagnosed with certain types of cancer, and up to three years of disability payments to firefighters because of injury or illness, and it cannot work as a firefighter. The new benefit requirement becomes effective January first, two thousand eighteen. In addition, there's two parts of the act relating to the diagnosis of cancer for eligible firefighters. One is a critical illness requirement, and the other is an income replacement requirement. Depending on the severity of the diagnosis, the critical illness requirement is either twenty-five thousand dollars or six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. The income replacement requirement is sixty percent of the firefighter's total salary as paid as a firefighter, or five thousand dollars per month, whichever is less for a period of thirty-six months. The Firefighters Cancer Foundation reports that firefighters have a twenty-nine percent higher risk of contracting cancer than the rest of the population, and that, and that's just due to the environments that they, they enter into during building fires and stuff, and it comes back down to the type of, um, furnishings that are in the homes and businesses today. And most of these types of cancers are being absorbed through the skin, um, and they're really noting it being, um, absorbed through the hoods, even though we protect everything, the hood, where it comes in contact with the skin, the carcinogens are being absorbed through that into the firefighters. So this bill here is there to help and protect those firefighters in the event that they come down with cancer. This bill identifies nineteen types of cancer that are eligible for this, um, this benefit. The other side of that is, they estimate that this benefit is going to cost four hundred dollars per firefighter for, for each department. So being our department, it, it's gonna be in the range of twenty-five thousand dollars per year that the city will have to pay to, and provide this insurance coverage, and again, that's an estimate of four hundred dollars, they have not, um, finalized that, that's just an estimate from GMA on that. So I, I just wanted to bring that forward, that's something that, um, there's a lot of unanswered questions yet, because we have firefighters that work part-time at other departments, just like every other department in this, in the state, so who's responsible for that benefit, to pay for that, are we responsible for a hundred percent of it, do we share that? So there's a lot of unanswered questions at this point, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention that this, this is coming, and, and we believe that the governor is gonna, um, sign it on Thursday, so if you have any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer, if I can answer them at this point. Yep, okay. The other thing I wanted to bring to your attention was a pharmacy agreement we have with North Fulton Hospital, um, and this is more of an operational-type issue, but I figured you got tired of hearing me about all the thousands of dollars we're collecting through muscular dystrophy and our boot drives every other Friday, so I figured I'd bring something different. Um, we have an agreement with North Fulton Hospital where we, um, are able to take our drug boxes that are on our, all our ALS engines and exchange them. They will provide all the medications and drugs, and then we just go pick up a new box, give them our old box, and they restock it for us, and then they only charge us for what? And then they only charge us for what we use. If we don't use it, they rotate it back into their system. And there's no expiration dates or anything like that that we have to deal with because nothing's wasted. Well, since North Fulton Hospital has now been taken over by Wellstar, our contract which expires January first, or I'm sorry, July first, they are not going to renew it. And that, that will affect Milton, Alpharetta, and Johns Creek. So now we're pursuing some other options to try to figure out how we're going to obtain our medications as well as not having a waste. We can buy them through a pharmacy, but once it expires, we have to replace it. The great thing about this was they could rotate it back into the system and it, and it was really no loss. Now we're gonna be experiencing some type of loss and, and our cost for our ALS service is gonna go up. I, I don't know by how much yet, but I did anticipate an increase in that, so.
Joe?
So, so did Wellstar just say they weren't interested in participating anymore? Or was there some kind of cost we could offset or to allow, to, to incent them to keep doing it?
I, I met with the pharmacist, the director down there, and she told me that since Wellstar and any of their other hospitals are not providing this service to the community, they are no longer gonna provide it here. And I said, this is a great partnership that we have with the community. And most of the patients that we touch end up at their facility.
Right, right.
And we pay for whatever we use. So if, if we bring a drug box in that's missing this, this, and this because we used it on a patient, they'll send us a bill for that and just replace it. But she said that they are not interested in participating in this.
We looked a little deeper into it. There's a concern with integrity issues with what's returned, things along those lines. They're concerned about liability associated with it. I think we are reaching out to some other local hospitals to see if we, if we can have that agreement with another hospital.
That's all I have. If you have any questions?
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
All right, Bert and Deb, come on down.
Good evening. While Stacy was going over the budget, I was able to pull some reports for you. And it looks like we have already collected about eighty percent of the impact fees that we collected in total last fiscal year. So last year, the total was nine hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars and an additional about two hundred and sixteen dollars in interest gained on that account that we then transferred out through different amendments to the capital projects that they'll be covering in the coming years. This year so far, we've collected seven hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and about ninety-one dollars and fifty cents in interest.
That through March or April or?
That is through today.
Through today, okay.
So.
You sure no more checks have come in tonight?
Five P M. Close of business. So we, we're looking pretty good. It looks like it's going, it's increasing, especially with the change to the hundred percent for the parks and recreation. So if you'd like, I can bring that forward. Each presentation I do to kinda keep you updated is where we are since we only do the transfer at the end of the year. In addition to that, we just kinda have a couple of housekeeping items in finance. We are working on business licenses due. We have a couple of reports. They were due back on March thirty-first. And we still have, we sent out on the seventeenth of April about one hundred and ninety different pieces of mail to unreg, un-renewed businesses. Eighty-six of those were to grocery seeds, brick and mortar-type businesses around the community. We sent those certified mail. And so we had eight returns. So we're trying to work out some address issues and we had twenty-four that still weren't delivered. So we're trying to reach out to them to let them know that they have to renew because typically around the fifteenth of May, we send out the official citations to come in and pay a fine if they haven't renewed and they're still in business. So we're working closely with, trying to communicate with all of our businesses. And Homebase just got a regular piece of mail to them just saying, please, as a courtesy, come renew. And if they didn't, if they've not, well, longer in business, to please just notify us so we can terminate them from the system. So we're working through all those types of things. And then also, we have property taxes. We are looking to issue five phase this week, so we'll have those going out. And if a tax sale is necessary or required, it'll be held around August. It's a little later this year than in planned years past because of the little later billing we did this past fiscal year. And also July will be a holiday, so we have to do it a certain day of the month and that holiday falls in the way. That is our updates right now, and otherwise, we're just on course for regular business. Does anyone have any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Bernadette?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Sarah, economic development.
Good evening, mayor and council. I wanted to give you an update on what I've been working on. And first of all, we sent out our business satisfaction survey. In beginning of February, we sent out nine hundred and eighty-seven of them and received fifty-five responses, which is about five point five percent, which is pretty decent. From those, we have addressed thirteen issues that came, you know, whether they were complaints or people had questions about how to become a vendor with the city. There were some horse pedestrian safety issues that were brought to our attention as well as sign ordinances and people wanting speed bumps and not understanding the variance procedures. But we had thirteen issues that were addressed from that. And from the information that when people, there was a question that said, what are your top concerns? What are you most worried about? So we took those. And on June fifteenth, at our new city hall and partnering with the CCA and MBA, we're gonna host our first small business symposium where we have a lunch with a leadership motivational-type speaker and then breakout seminars. And those three topic, or the topics that will be available will all be things from that survey. Things like cash flow management, talent recruitment, the legal side of small business, and of course, local government ordinances and procedures. And then at the end, we are gonna have an expo in here that you have to have a Milton Homebase license to participate in. So we're really excited about that. I also have been working on the retail recruitment study that you guys funded this year. We are, I'm gonna get stage two back this Thursday. So stage one was they did in-depth demographics for each of our three business nodes. And from that, which was pretty cool, they, they were able to look at our segments of our, the demographics and tell us how best they like to be communicated to. So I was able to take a part of my study and pass it along to Shannon to kind of assist with her communication study. What we're gonna talk about on Tuesday are those twenty businesses that they think we should reach out to directly. And if I agree with the companies and I, you know, we like the direction they're going in, they'll start the conversations with those companies to say, Sarah, we'll be reaching out to you and here's some information on Milton, to actually get those companies to us. And the last thing on my list is our cultural arts committee. You guys just approved the six of seven people for our committee, so we still have one outstanding. And our first meeting is going to be May tenth at eleven-thirty. So we will get rolling on all the ideas that you guys have been sending us. I have a nice little folder in my office from the past year of residents and you guys telling us what you see as important art projects for us to work on.
Any questions or comments? All right, Matt?
An incubator system, how's that coming along?
We're very excited. We have talked with Banyan Group, so they're the ones who actually own Deerfield Center, all of those buildings over there, one and two. And they have offered us some space. And I'm meeting with some people next Tuesday to see if they're going to help finance it. So we're moving along nicely.
All right.
Okay, thanks, Sarah. All right. At this point, unless anybody?
Matt? I do have one question. Steve, where are we on the Milton Equestrian Committee as far as meeting and things like that?
I believe Courtney had a, had a meeting that was set to go for early this month. I don't, I don't know the exact date, but I will certainly get that back out to you.
Yeah, just curious, appreciate it.
No, no problems. I, we were looking for an early May start for both of those, both of those groups. And I know she was having success in, in putting that together. I just don't know the exact date.
Okay, cool.
Okay, then I'll, I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.